Well, yeah. You said the plan is not here.
No.
Ready?
Yep.
Just we'll call the meeting to order. Recognize our teachers in here and Joel, I think behind the mound. And for Mr. Peterson first, and thank you, thank congratulations.
Uh, just a thank you to the coaches, uh, we're getting to the end of the season. Um, uh, cross country had their, their regional meet last Saturday. Uh, volleyball has their final game, or they're playing more tonight, they got their final game Monday here against Kindred, and then we have our district meeting in the morning, and district tournament starts next Thursday. And the way it sounds like they're gonna do it is, uh, higher seed for the district and for the regionals. And then, uh, football, we have a football game we got Friday night, um, if they must win, if they win, they get a possible making a playoff. And then also congratulations to our homecoming court. King was Max Fair, Kalina's Asher McFadden. Our king candidates were Tucker Brown, Peter Brand, and Kay Christensen. And our queen candidates were Kendra Greshen, Grace Miller, and Haley Schaefer. And then the congratulations to our V C N staff homecoming court. The king was Mr. Fee, Daniel Thomas. Lassie.
Woo!
And our king candidates were Mr. Purcell, John Samuelson, Stacey Schaefer, and I think John said this was, he lost six years ago, one, or seven years ago, one, six straight, and a loss, so. He was a little, little put out, he's gonna campaign harder next year. And then our queen candidates were Emily, Emily Barnes, Melissa Betts, and Lily. Thank you all.
Where's your tear up?
I should've wore it, it's in my office.
It'd great, it'd go great with the jersey.
Sorry.
Anything else agenda wise?
That should be good, no, I don't have anything for the dinner.
Okay. Then we'll move on to consent agenda, minutes, bills, financial reports.
You want pledge of securities with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Any comments on those or what?
Um, for the pledge of securities, I've recognized all the bank accounts, and the amount of all the accounts that bank forward match what they say we should have of two million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. So that just needs to be approved, so I can sign and return them.
I'll make it though. As long as it's accurate.
All second.
Chad? All in favor of the pledge of security, say aye.
Aye.
Ours, ours are approved. The rest, we look at the other three things on the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on those?
I'm just curious, what are the five panel partitions? What are those things? I'm just curious. There are COVID expense that we got.
Special little bedroom was moved out of the bathroom, and then we have that storage closet, so we divided Mel's room off with them.
I was just curious what they were. Or what they were for.
They were assigned to us twice, the first two are broken.
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But why is still sitting out there?
I was just curious what they were for.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I have a comment, now that I think of it. On all of the bills, anything that's ESSER, I'm putting in parentheses, ESSER, and they're going under whatever account that they kind of would be long to otherwise, because Harold has suggested not to use the accounts being suggested by D P I, because they keep changing their minds. So, I'm putting them into those accounts, keeping track of them on a spreadsheet, and at some point, I will have to journal entries out of those accounts into whichever accounts D P I decides on, so.
Ooh, all this work for you. Keep up.
Any other questions or comments? If we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make it more.
Well, second.
Mike.
Yes.
Michelle. Yes. Brent.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yeah.
Brett.
Yes.
Miniature boards, presidents report, I have none, career intact. Basically just doing some COVID update stuff there last month. We, uh, looked at some of the grants we're working on. We didn't get the one, so we've done some discussion what we wanna do with that office, or the staff room, trying to turn it into something more of a kitchen that they can use for the transition classes, and the ag class could use it to come in and cook, so we're looking at what we can do there. We've got another option, when we didn't get the one grant, they steered us another way, so we're looking at that one. Um, power project, they were shingling today, they're trying to get that buttoned up. We're looking at, we're gonna send it back to the, the advisory committee for the ag department to look at that greenhouse, which way we wanna go, if it's just a bubble type height top greenhouse, or going for the full grid greenhouse. So we sent it out to the advisory committee to give us some input back on that. Met with Development Corporation, which they've been working on for a few, well, year, a couple of years here, trying to do some more trainings and trying to help us out with equipment, which, if you remember, a year or two ago, they gave us some welding equipment and stuff like that, they wanna try to expand, they want more job training, more for maybe adult learners. And we, as the schools, and I went to that meeting with, I said, I don't know what benefit we would wanna do to pay for adult training, but we're all, if we could work some way to get some funding, we'll talk about a name change, and that way they could get some more funding, which would be a benefit to the, our kids, because we would get more top notch equipment. So I said, that way it's more of a benefit, we want, need some benefit for the our age kids, our high school kids, to look at more money coming to those programs. And they think they can get some money, grant monies, with looking at a way to call it an academy, or some different things that we, and we talked about maybe some summer programs that we could look at, so we could, even some of the kids could get credits in the summer, or even some sophomores or something could work into one of the programs in the summer, so we, when it's not that, when we're not conflicting times. So we're looking at some of that, and that would also be able to expand into a lot of job shadows, which we're trying to figure out how to introduce to job shadows. Still working with Development Corporation, 'cause that's where there's money, the Rush Grants had three hundred and some thousand dollars that we've, that they're trying to work with us to access some of those dollars. That's all I got, the career intact. Mrs. Bits, technology.
Um, I have a whole lot to report, we have some differences going on in these report cards, which, um, Mr. Bussi and Mr. Wilson probably touch on a little bit as far as parent teacher conferences and report cards, we have some new elementary report cards, um, that we're, we talked about doing in the summer, but we just finished them up now. Um, oh, they still need to read them?
Oh, I said not leave.
Oh, okay. Lots of coding and lots of fun, um, creating those elementary report cards in our school. And then tomorrow, we're gonna be working with teachers in EdChat to talk about, um, exactly how the conferences are gonna go over Zoom. Um, and she'll, she'll talk to you about that in the report, but, um, I'm gonna be focusing on that, getting them pressed for um, Zoom conferences for the fall, and making sure that parents need to know what they each know, and who to play against as well. Um, we have a majority of our project, projector sold that we pulled down from this summer. Um, so that's nice, even seeing some of the apps over Facebook, I have them to, and I offer to the schools and our parents before going out publicly to finally get all these projectors up and selling, so I posted on, um, on a whole Facebook spell site, and we got rid of all of them today.
Awesome.
So, yeah, it's nice to, for somebody else to be able to use those, and us to get a little something back from it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any questions for me? How do we manage these day to day fires?
I'll keep cheering.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson, extracurriculars.
Yeah, we just met, what we're gonna have to do is we, um, with the governor's declaration for large gatherings, we're gonna have to move our attendance for extracurricular events to a hundred people, so that capacity will drop to one hundred. And then we're gonna figure out, we'll, we'll take care of the, um, doing vouchers for the Kindred home game on Monday, and then we will meet again probably before basketball starts to discuss what we're gonna do for basketball, 'cause that's generally where we get, especially boys' basketball, we get a little more attendance, so we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna handle those games. We also need to discuss double headers, 'cause I just checked, we got four, three of them here and one in, in Allen Dale, so we've got, we've got three double headers we have to address. I don't know how we'll ever play a game in the, in the oxygen with people in there. If we do use the oxygen, it'll probably have to be just kids, just players, no, no fans, nothing, and then a hundred in the weight gym. So, the other option would be, we talked about moving the game at three o'clock, and starting, you know, the JV at three, four thirty, six and seven thirty, all the weight gym. So, it's just, it's, it's becoming, you know, like I says, you get into the busier seasons, it wasn't as bad for us this fall with just volleyball, because it was easy to do, but now we're gonna be competing with, you know, two basketball teams, we got, we got the dance, and they're coming in, in the mornings, and in the little gym and whatever, but that really doesn't affect us, but the practices and the things after school, we're gonna run into even when we have games, with blockage space and things like that, so we'll have to talk more about that. Um, they're, um, recommend, they will accept the dance proposal, what they, what the dance coaches have recommended, they wanna do their practices in the, in the oxygen again. Seven dancers, two coaches, morning practices from seven to eight in the oxygen. Temperatures taken by, for all nine daily, mask worn in all commons areas, but not in the gym, in the safety for the workouts. No one else allowed to enter the gym during designated practice time. Students wash their hands of the foreigner gym and exiting, and everyone must bring their own water bottle. So, I mean, do we need to approve, does, do you want the board to approve that, or is that just something that the extracurricular committee can go ahead and let them do?
Yes.
Okay, so then that, that'll become the next thing, how about for, like, for when we get to basketball season? Do you want us to bring the plan back and approve from the full board? Or do we want to move forward with what the extracurricular committee recommends based on the guidance?
Yeah, I think you guys just.
Yeah.
We'd like to see them, but I think I would trust them people.
You're just gonna tell them directly, I know what they're doing.
Maybe we want to state.
Yeah. You guys are gonna follow the guideline anyways, so.
Yeah. But we just wanna make sure, we, we don't wanna, do we, we don't need it to be board approved, well, we can actually approve it at the board meeting when we have one, but we, you don't wanna have a special meeting, just approve it.
No.
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 Perfect. And then the other one, um, that we're talking about when, when Rob came in was, Jody Schlenker's been talking to us about archery, so they're gonna put a plan together, bring it in, um, we, the way, I don't, they haven't talked anything about practices, and Cindy had thought maybe they were gonna practice on their own, and not come to the gym to practice, possibly, depending what, what their, their plan says, but they get, they have a tournament scheduled. And so they're gonna have to have a pretty solid plan in order for them to do it. And I gotta check liability too, we're just, we're talking about that.
That might have to come back, 'cause that's what we talked about with our plan, that they would come back for, if we're gonna talk about a tournament or something.
Yeah. Yeah. And what I, I need to check out liability, if, if they, if they give us this plan and say, this is what we're gonna do, and then all of a sudden that plan blows up, are we responsible, or are they responsible, and who's the, who's it gonna come down on if they end up over, you know, two hundred people in here at one time? So, and that's if the plan stays the same, so we'll.
I think in-house practices, you guys can handle, if something's coming from outside, from that to, you know, basketball, three on threes, that's gonna come to us to see that.
Okay, does that, no, so you, so the tournament, they will need, will need to approve it at the board level, okay? Practices, we can, wherever, if you want to do that.
That's an in-house, that's an in-house thing.
So we need to make sure that they get that together, and, and right now, based on that, they couldn't have more than a hundred people in, uh, in the gym at a time. So I don't know how they're gonna accomplish that with all the shooters they have, and where they're gonna wait, and, you know, after all, they kids in, they're gonna all be sitting in a parking lot, and the next group's gonna come in, and then they're gonna have to go out the back door, and, you know, 'cause there won't be any way to mingle, you're gonna have to come in one door and out the other.
It's just gonna spread out, because you're gonna have to be six foot shooters and they're.
See, and that's, that's the other thing, are we, we're gonna, are we gonna make them say, social distance their shooters? 'Cause right now, they shoot back to back, they, they shoot, I mean, very close. And then she, you said they shoot three times at a shorter range and three times at a longer range, so if they have to shoot their three short, move back and shoot long, and then, and then out, and the next group comes in, does the same, they're really gonna have to limit, they have to limit.
She says she managed to practice, they figured out how she can do that.
Okay.
I didn't have the notes for that. Yeah, I, other than me, never told you all that.
So the practice, she hasn't worked out?
Well, she says she has a pretty good plan, she thinks, but.
So that more likely probably times that each kid shoots and then they leave.
Right, something about moving out and then somebody shooting and moving in.
Yeah, so then basically, we'd have to worry about would be, would be the tournament then. And if they, well, they just have to get a plan together, and then that'll have to be approved.
That would, that's bringing all the, other people into it, it isn't our own group.
They'll have to, then they'll have to have that fairly soon, probably by the November meeting, or by the October, November meeting, then.
Was there any plan, or is that tournament planned?
January seventh and eighth, but they're gonna have, not eighth, not, but they're gonna have to get there, you know, that all the stuff out to it, and how it's gonna work, so I would, I would assume that probably have to be, unless, unless we're okay approving it. Well, I guess it doesn't matter, that's when we approve it, if you approve it on December sixteenth, they would just have, you know, about two weeks to get.
They usually start practices in.
The practices, we can.
Practice, we're talking the tournament.
It's just the tournament.
He just said the tournament that you guys wanna approve as a full board.
But people sign up.
That's what I'm wondering, how, how soon they sign up.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they usually sign up, usually a month out.
Yeah.
Well, maybe she'll have a plan by the November meeting, opt for it.
Okay. Yeah, and she wanted to talk to both of us before she submitted, but she wanted to make sure she was on the same page, so. Okay, so the tournament then, that, if they, if they wanna do the tournament, that will have to come to the full board.
Yeah.
Okay. There you go, Rob, Brent, that takes you up.
You're doing a good job, Rob.
Okay, um, I think that's, uh, that's about it, so dance is okay, and we're gonna do, I think we're doing vouchers for, we'll, we'll do vouchers for the Kindred game, and just gotta figure out how many for each team. Once I find out how many kids I have, and then we'll, we'll put out vouchers for the close hundred people.
Pre-K six principals report.
Um, what's happening in elementary, we celebrate School Custodian Appreciation Day, October second. And this week is School Bus Drivers Appreciation Week. So, peer leaders made them cards, and now they're making all the bus drivers cards, and we've been giving them candy cards and shout out on Facebook to them. Um, we have scheduled professional development for October twelfth and October fourteenth. We talked about priority standards and report cards, because they're new, the report cards, I mean, they're not much different, but now they reflect North Dakota priority standards wording. Um, and so we spent half days working on those. Uh, reading corps data was shared with the teachers at one of their morning meetings. Students are making tremendous growth, and a lot of the teachers that we talked to are seeing that carry over into the classroom, which is good. Next month, Tina's coming to share some of that data with you. And then, peer leaders stayed off at school on Monday, October fifth, and worked on team building activities. Um, so far this year, we've given up two thousand five hundred and fifty-four points per vise and pry leader, and teachers have written sixty-nine vise and pry cards to students and families. So if you see an increase in postage, that's probably why. Um, so, elementary, M T S S, the plan was to have that math focus this year, but with the awarding of the, um, the grant, we are going to switch to build our social emotional pathway as our focus this year. Um, she did email back and said the cost of the grant is seventy-five thousand, so she's gone back with it a couple times. But, either way, I think it's a great opportunity. Um, so we will be working on our social emotional pathway throughout this year to fit with that grant. So we would've done the work anyways, we just wouldn't have done it next year, so we're working that up, and then we'll go back to math. Um, the team was finalized today, so we have the two counselors, our two teacher reps, um, Mrs. Amen and Mrs. Miller, they were on our M T S S team, Mrs. Bryn, and then, um, Allison Swenson and Alana Valenta, they're the school psych and school social worker through Chi and Valley. And then I have a high school representative, I talked to Mr. Wilson about it a little bit, but he's busy for the meeting tomorrow and another training. Tomorrow, we get more information on it, tomorrow morning, and then, um, we'll start meeting twice a month for that specifically. Teachers, um, they, in our last elementary meeting, we talked about determining indicators for their teacher evaluation metrics, so we're kind of laying it out of what we expect, um, in each category. So, under planning engaging lessons, and then the student engagement part, and I've been, I've done a formal, informal round of observations with, um, about ten to fifteen minutes with all the teachers. Miss Bits had said that, we're doing conferences over Zoom this year. We sent out a staff survey, um, on what they would prefer, and a majority said over Zoom, just because of how everything is right now. Um, and then the administration wrote and sent an email today to parents about what that'll look like coming up in the next couple of weeks. Questions?
The only thing that, um, Tina had asked, is there anything specific that the board wants to see when she comes next month for data? She wanted to put some things together, and then she thought, well, she does, she doesn't wanna put so much information together that is way too much. Is there anything specifically that we want to see?
She has it laid out really nice, she has, like, the percentage of students proficient, the at-home students proficiency, reading corps, and so.
I, I would like to see if she had the baseline from, from a group of students that she worked with last year, from when she started.
So, and.
And if she's still working with them, see where their baseline, if they, they grow? Or are they, are the students switching so much that she doesn't have the same groups?
Well, she doesn't teach kids anymore.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is.
Oh, she has, like, our intervention kids, the ones who are identified, we have their test scores from before, and then we're keeping track of them as they go through the intervention.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm saying, is if we can see that they're actually making growth, progress.
Yeah, she has that. Yeah, so she's showing the progress, like, for face-to-face kids, online students, M T S S students.
Right.
And then she has specific data about reading corps.
Yeah, and I, I think that's just, uh, you know, not doubting that, that, I just, I would like to see the growth that's
Absolutely.
From, from just your average classroom student that's not getting intervention to where our intervention kids are, if they meet, or, or kind of leveling off, meeting with the, their peers or not, or, you know, how far below that they are from their peers, where they started from.
Sure, yeah, that's, I'm grateful, have her put that together. I think first grade is left for math, for wrapping up, start testing this week, so. She's been connecting with our at-home kids to get them tested over Zoom too, so.
Any other questions? Not, thank you. Mr. Wilson, seven twelve.
Uh, wanna thank the student council and Mr. Samuelson, for quickly putting together a homecoming weekend activity day outside, that the whole school was able to do, participate in, um, through discussions with students, they were real concerned about losing the entirety of that. I thought about, well, what if we tried to do it outside, so I talked to Mr. Samuelson, and being outside and knowing prior couple of years, with the early snow blizzards that took place, of it not getting canceled due to weather, we had to move up pretty quick, and it wasn't gonna match up with any homecoming festivities, but they did a good job of getting that, it was fun out there. Everything that normally takes place in June, we did outside, so it was a good time. We're having our North Dakota Honor Society banquet ceremony next Tuesday, on the twenty-seventh. Emily Ames, Bronson Howgan, Sarah Mueller, and Hannah Wieland will be the four new inductees. And then, uh, Veterans Day celebration, uh, this year, I met with Mr. Samuelson again to go and think about, how can we do that, even though we can't have everybody coming into the building, just so that we don't not do anything, we don't recognize it? So, I talked to him about doing an online tribute, using past years' pictures and videos, and then being able to post that onto our website, onto our Facebook, and all of that, and then also, uh, we're doing the homerooms times for the high school, that those teachers will then be able to also do something with their kids, whether it's a thirty-second video clip or a, whatnot, to show their appreciation for that, and then that gets put together, uh, and we'll send that out, just so that, you know, we can continue that tradition, even though we can't do it in our normal, traditional way. Uh, parent-teacher conference, Mr. Bussi touched upon that, that was on November fifth. The next thing that I wanna share, um, is just a little information on the importance of us being here, and the difference that it's made compared to how we ended last year, just a little bit of, uh, data information.
So it doesn't matter when you get your hands.
Yeah, so what I, what I did, because, you know, having two kids my own that had to go through this, and one being well, one not. So what we got here is quarter four versus quarter one. Um, last year, for D's or S in classes, at the end of quarter four, we had sixty-four of them. This year, at quarter one, we have forty-four. Uh, quarter four, last year, we had thirty students, so those sixty-four grades were between thirty students. This year, we have twenty-two for quarter one. Um, student passing rate, quarter four was seventy-seven percent, quarter one was eighty-three percent. Now, that seventy-seven and eighty-three percent are the percentage of students that are passing all of their classes with a C or better, is what that number represents. Um, classes passing, all of the classes, there are a total of seven hundred and ninety-three classes. Quarter one, ninety-two percent of them were passed, quarter one, ninety-five percent. Now, I included D's because I don't necessarily think that D is a great grade, it's one bad score away from failing, in, uh, my opinion, but if we just did F's, quarter four last year, we had forty-eight of them. We had eighteen students with F's. Quarter one, we had ten students with F's, fifteen classes with F's. That's a big difference, which is a highlight of the importance and the hard work that our teachers do, and touching base with these kids every day, once they start to see them struggle, to get them to where they, they need to be. At the end of last year, it was really, really difficult to be able to touch base with those students, and not be able to get there. We had one student that resulted in not being able to graduate. Had he been here, he would've. And that's the importance of what we're doing here, and the great work that our teachers are doing to make this kind of a difference. Are we always gonna have students that struggle through it? Yes, but this kind of shows us that our day-to-day interaction with our students makes a difference in their ability to be successful in school. Any questions on that?
Thank you for this, this is awesome. I like the visual.
And that's all I have.
No, thank you. Mr. Peterson, superintendent.
Uh, just we, we've got our conference, the M D C, M D C L Super Conference, um, on Thursday and Friday, we're gonna have school. And then, uh, what we're doing, this came from the M D C L, um, we're gonna offer the teachers, the stipend paid out of the Education Corps Fund for two days, those two days, if they, if they, they've got some things that they've got, and they're gonna have to do all these two days. They can choose, they can say, no, I don't want the stipend, and I don't wanna do that. Or they can say, we'll take the stipend and do some things. What they, what the thing is that Amy was pushing on was, these teachers have done way above and beyond all year, I mean, for the last, since March, they've been just overloaded. So she said, why not give them a little bit of an assignment for these two days, and if, if they go to the con, whatever, she said, they don't have to sign up for the conference, but, uh, core dollar, education core dollars will pay for, for stipends for them for, for a couple of days. So the, uh, principals have set up some criteria for them, and it's not a whole lot, because, you know, I mean, these, these guys have, you know, they Zoomed, they did everything this, this spring, they were, they, everything that was asked of them to do, and, and they've, they've been planning and, and trying to get, you know, all this stuff done, so, um, we're gonna do that for those two days. Um, we're going to do that for those two days. If, I think we've got a couple of, three of us are going, are going to attend the conference. And, and even though if we're attending the conference, they can still do the, whatever they need to do with that. That was kind of a, a thing that, that Amy, you know, said, use that, you've got it, why not use it? She said, and, and your teaching reserve, so that's what we're going to do for them for that. And then under activities director, we're just doing the scheduling volleyball. We did have a game scheduled tonight and as most of you are aware, it was canceled just because of of our COVID situation. Uh, it's rescheduled for November ninth. And then we'll, we'll go forward with finishing up this and then getting together the basketball for the extra day or so. And then leadership team, basically what we talked about, a lot of it was the parent teacher conferences. How are we going to do them? We came down to, are we going to do hybrid? Face-to-face or Zoom? And we finally decided to go for Zoom, so.
Can I add your activities report real quick?
What's that?
One thing that I forgot to let you know is we did get our Pixelot camera installed today in the gym. So, if you want to just take a peek at that, it looks really nice. So, we will be ready to go for live streaming. It just got, it just got installed today, so I need to go through and learn the scheduling aspect of it. I don't have the information on that yet.
Does somebody have to run that?
No. It follows the game. It's, it's programmed. So, all I have to do is log in and schedule the event.
Monday, Monday, they'll, we'll be able to do that with the, with the kinder involved.
So, where do you find that information at?
It'll go on our website.
Yeah, I'll send out the information as soon as they get that part of it set up. Like, the hardware was just installed today, so I need to get some account management issue to me. I go through a checklist of everything that's completed and now the last thing on here is, is getting the account information where I can log in and somebody shows me how to schedule all this.
Is that ours permanently?
Yeah.
So, then are we going to look at broadcasting games from, from here on out?
Yes, and that's, that's one of the things that we had to talk about too. And like, cause now that we've got that in there, we could move it and say, just parents. And the rest of you, you can view it online.
They do have to pay, it's on the NFHS network. So, there is a fee, a monthly fee that has to be paid to do.
It's cheaper than paying to get in the.
It is. Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but yeah, once, yeah, to drive and.
So, Super Bowl party, you could have a watch the BC advisor.
I know some people out there so far.
Cause I tried to do that with my brother and their kids. At a football game, they went to a football game and it was a night.
Yeah.
To try and get signed up and to pay and.
I think they were so backlit because everybody wanted it all at once because of COVID.
See, we, we, we requested this this summer, I mean, toward the end of summer.
Yeah.
This is how long it took them because they were so backlog.
But just to watch the game, you had to sign up and you had to pay, you needed your credit card and all that stuff and.
And what, how was the, was the quality?
Never got to see it.
What's that?
Never got to see it.
Never ever got to see it.
What?
Put the credit card in and never ever got to see it and never, that's what I'm getting at, it never played it.
Well, one thing that with the talk on the tackle list, the football games have a little bit, been a little bit trickier, but you have to understand the why, the connection to a camera out on a football field is probably going to be different than in the building. You know, if they're trying to use Wi-Fi or some other type of hotspot or some type of connection for that, you're not going to get the, the, the uh.
That's what they had to do.
The stream, yeah.
Game on to his NF page.
I mean, ours is, it's anything that's been in the buildings have been robust. I mean, it's all hard cabled in, so you have the designated bandwidth that you need. Out on a football field, I don't know if, what the bandwidth situation is like, but we'll get that information out to parents ahead of time so that if they are interested, they can sign up and not do it on the fly because when you're trying to watch the game and you're doing it on the fly.
Cause I mean, will it be a one-time fee for you?
It's monthly.
I don't want to be like her to grandparents who want to dive on that too.
And so that could be our other option too, if we decide for basketball, we'll just let parents in.
There were different options, sorry.
Give the other team two tickets per player and.
I tried to do what you did, Brett, when I was leading Rockford. Like, I got in my car and pushed the link and then I saw the information come up and I'm like, well, driving home, but I think it gives you different options. You were riding.
See.
Driving.
I was at home.
I hadn't started driving yet.
I was at home harvesting for my brother so he could go to the game and I made him give me his credit card to do it. And it didn't work.
Yeah, it's, it's twenty dollars a, or excuse me, eleven dollars a month and you can cancel anytime or seventy dollars a year.
So, you have sixteen home games.
But then you can watch anything.
Yeah.
That's random hour, which is nice too.
Which everybody in North Dakota is doing it, so.
So, that mean you could, so take, you could watch Valley City and.
Can't we just like be a thousand bucks, let's cover everything?
They have to, each person has to sign up.
Have to sign up individually.
So, we would want.
Can't you get a group?
I'm sure.
I mean, we do have COVID on three.
Can the school buy popcorn then?
But honestly, if you're paying eleven dollars for the month, by the time they drive here and pay the gate fee and concessions.
And Brett wants popcorn, so he's going to drive here and get his popcorn and then drive.
We'll just have a drive-through right by the, right through the.
Two games, if you watch two games, you got your money's worth a month.
A month.
Buy you a popcorn though.
I'll buy you a box of popcorn.
I'd buy you an air popcorn.
Oh, yeah, you're definitely, but they're only a little bit of a hundred people anyway. We're not going to see a lot of people, so.
Hey, usually that, you're not true at that statement because we get into games free.
Right.
I'm so sorry.
Maybe you make a motion, you know.
Don't, don't purpose the program, come to the game. What are you going to do? You're not a parent anymore.
Still coming in. Boy, you know love.
Next of Greg, you're committing, you live with a few old parents.
An executive school.
You're going to have to.
So, if we limited, I don't have to visit with Brett very often.
We'll be getting much fun then.
On facilities management schedule.
Hey, anything on others that are up in there?
No.
Old business COVID update?
Just, just some of the things that we've been hearing, you know, um with the cases going up, we have over a thousand today. Um, and some of the, some of the counties are moving to high-risk levels. Looks like some, some counties or some school districts are going totally away from the color system. So, something to think about for the, possibly for the November meeting. We want to get away from the colors. Cause we, when we, when we went to yellow, we switched and stayed because we got a recommendation from doctors and, and um DPI to stay in person. Not sure what they, we got a, I, I can find out more, what they would recommend if our county was red. Do we have to go? I don't, I don't, I don't know that answer for sure because they've been going back and forth. First, they said, if it's red, you're out. And it says, well, you know, that's really not, that's just a co, county color, that's not the school. So, we just need to get more clarification.
That's local control too in our.
Yeah, but see, and our plan, and our plan, it says it was red. And we go, we go remote, but when we went yellow, we didn't go hybrid and came back to.
We have to change our plan to fit the state's vision of keeping kids in school. Because they have less exposure in school, so if you watch this, I know Lee watched it, he texted me. Um, if a county goes to a color, the school districts don't have to follow.
So, we need to change our plan.
Well, yeah, because we're going to get.
We should, yeah.
We're going to get people saying, well, you have this plan, now you're not following it, so.
I agree.
Yep, and if you go, if they, if it says red, remote, I mean, now, by, by us going staying from yellow, staying in re, in person instead of doing a hybrid wasn't a big deal because we weren't really planning on leaving.
Right.
But now if it says you go remote, we go remote on red and red happens.
And we don't.
And we don't. People are going, oh, this says remote and we're, you know, we want to move to remote, so. We need to talk about that a little further with us and then we can come back with some recommendations in November. But I think Grand Forks, they said they're at high risk now. They went to the high risk levels. I'm not sure if they, if they, if you push it to red without, I don't want to share Albert.
How critical is this? Are we going to have to have a special meeting before that? I mean, what if it ramps up?
If it does, we might, I mean, his, his next, is he, is he on tomorrow? When, when is he?
Friday.
So, we've got, if it's Friday and we, Friday will be I don't know what, October.
Twenty-third.
And we meet again on November tenth. So, I don't foresee us, I mean, cause our number seven has been real high in, in bars. So, unless they would really, really ramp up, I don't think he's going to go to Grand Forks in bars as of right now.
I think if he did that, we would probably have to have a special.
We would have to have a special meeting.
Well, can we get around that by you guys making or giving us the permission to take that out of the plan right now?
No, because we'd have to approve the new plan.
We can't just throw one out and I'll have something.
No, it's not creating a new plan, it's just taking that section out.
Um, what, what I did last time per your guys' recommendation is we took hybrid learning. So, what I could do is just, what I could, what we could do is just get rid of the colors and say, we will move based on cases within our school. I mean, really, that's all it is, is we separated each of it into colors and then we could just have that per the state's keeping kids face-to-face. Um, I don't know, what is it, encouragement? Encouragement? We, we will adjust our plan according to how many cases are in our school.
There you go.
Cause what, I mean, we were case-free, contact-free for four weeks, which was great, and that just changed Friday. So, um. We could do something like that if you guys wanted to.
Yeah, we could, instead of that, instead of.
And then have a reading and then approve it at the November meeting.
If it's a red color, we could, if it says remote, we could just say upon governor's recommendation or, or some of that nature. Cause we, I don't, I guess I might, we wouldn't go based on what we've been told by doctors and DPI and the state is we don't want to be out of face-to-face learning. So, I guess that, red then would become um requirement from the state or something of that nature to, to do that. But we could, you know, we could.
We'll start talking about the recommendations and vote from there.
Yeah, and I think, I think if, if it were to come to red, I mean, if, if we were to go, if they, if he put Farren County to red. Cause orange, we don't even have that color in, we just had yellow and then red. So, I would think he would go at least a week or so if, if they're going to go orange and then check and see before he jumped us all the way from yellow all the way to, to red. So, I think we'd be, we'd be okay just to get the plan written differently and we'll take those colors out. Decide, determine how we want to put in there, you know, wording and things like that and bring it back in November, have you guys approve it.
Yeah, we have to have something special.
Then we do it.
Yeah, we do it.
So, work on it, have it ready and then.
If the special one has to come up, we can get people here on phone or Zoom or whatever and.
And we'll keep that happy and just we change it on another one, number ten recommendations for.
And now with, with, with the Zoom aspect now, that's not that hard. We could just have, make sure five of you are on and each of you has, everywhere the plan, if you have a question, get it to us and we go all five of you or at least five of you on Zoom one night and get the plan changed if that's. Okay, perfect.
Simply made update?
Not, not much to it. Uh, the, they met, um, they're just putting together all the paperwork and things like that, how they're going to keep track of it. You know, they're going to get all that stuff when, when something would come up, um, getting it to Lindsay and so she's got count of, you know, what, what they're doing and just keep documentation, things like that, so. And were you at the, did you go to the meeting the other night? Was there anything else that? Mr. Schaefer didn't say much when I, he just said it was kind of met and went over some paperwork, things like that.
Yeah, we just checked the form and went over, yeah, who's going to show it and and how many people need to approve it. We voted that everybody should.
So, it's a majority vote?
Yeah. Okay.
Hey, board member replacement, that's the next thing on there. I am very grateful that we've got three real good candidates that have applied, which I'm glad to see. I really would like to, whoever doesn't get these positions, I think we should encourage them to run for these positions. I mean, we've got some nice candidates here and I thank you, thank them for flying. So, what we have to do is everybody has to have a signed ballot to vote. And Lindsay will read the results when we collect. Is there any other con, any discussion Ava has before or questions?
So. Is it private or?
No.
Okay.
No.
Some clarification on how it's done?
They're going to, she's going to hand out a ballot, you're going to have to put your name to it and then check who you're voting for.
And then turn it back in?
To me, you have.
To Lindsay. She'll, she'll read the votes aloud, so-and-so voted for so. There's no vote that we can do as a board that's secret from anyone. So, you'll get a ballot, you have to print, you sign your name to it and then vote and then you get a pickaxe.
Candidates are Eric Broton, Jessica Albright and Andrew Dewitt. They're all listed on the ballot, you mark one and then sign, print and date. Please.
No, those are taken right away. Were you sixteen butter tops? I found you.
Brett took four.
I think you only used three.
Well, I got six in my pocket.
I found you twice as much candy in one quarter than I did in three quarters last year. So, I'm like, if March is full year, teachers are comfortable coming in and grabbing candy and then roll.
You know, picked back from the dentist.
I don't hear from their dentist. Are they?
Yeah, well.
Do you want to have a customer, you'd have to vote.
They're all customers and I know it is.
You can declare it and we would vote if you have to vote or not, you can do that. We would decide if you vote.
I don't want better half.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's a hundred.
I know.
Oh, yeah, this is bad, you guys.
Did you get one?
It's all drunk and I'm enjoying. I will share.
I'll bring that over there.
Good thing you have six in your pocket. Okay, so we have Brett Fair voting for Eric Broton. We have Chad Bachan voting for Eric Broton. We have Cindy Christensen voting for Eric Broton. We have Rob Harstead voting for Eric Broton. We have Lee Lucetti voting for Eric Broton. We have Mike Schwer voting for Andrew Dewitt. We have Brent Brunner voting for Eric Broton. And we have Michelle Alston voting for Eric Broton. So, Eric is the winner, seven to one. And we would need a, a motion to appoint.
Yep, but then you contact them or?
Yes, I have paperwork that I have to send out to them because they have to um do the oath of office and stuff before they can actually.
I'll make that motion to accept the, the nominations or wherever you want.
Motion to appoint.
Point, okay. I have a second.
Who was that, Rob?
Rob.
My.
Yes. Yes.
Michelle? Yes, Brent?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Cindy? Yes, Rob?
Yes.
Chad?
Yeah.
Brett?
Nothing under his old business, right? New business superintendent valuation, you sent it out in the packet. When you have to make sure, make sure it opens up.
It opens and I was able to fill.
So that's the one you want us to fill out?
Yeah, clean out.
And that does, when you wanted, it's a new one that you wanted us to prove it.
No, no, that's the one you're gonna fill out. It has been fine-tuned on the instructional program, we went over that, so that has been fixed a little bit, it's with the packet.
I sent it with a board packet on Friday.
It's all with the packet. We fine-tuned that one section we met, and so if you look at that, it's a little bit different than it was in the past.
Good job, Mrs. Bussie.
It's helped me out with the program, and I was, you see, you see, I was in heaven, like, woo, what else can I do with this?
So we're gonna meet on the tenth, so I need that back by about the fifth of November. So I can get that.
First of November.
Okay, you, you're in the first. I'll haste the fifth, but I got that weekend to put together, then I can touch base and net receivers in before we meet on Tuesday, and get it out to you guys.
Put his calendar on the first, and he gets it to you.
If it isn't there on the fifth, you're not getting any include. So then I get together and I can get out to everybody and talk with Mr. Shaver soon on it. Shoot, turn the fifth back to me. I get mixed up on some of that, you wanna help me?
Sure. Got the, got the candy? Just sit down and go through it.
Hey, line my line. Anything else, new business, nothing? Correspondence or discussion? Once we get our new person here, do we wanna look at that retreat?
Yes.
Yes.
At some point, so maybe next meeting, we look at a date or something, when we get Eric here and look at that, so. Nothing else, we're adjourned.